Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting Worcester City Council being held this Monday, November 18th, 2024. Tonight's meeting here is obviously here in council chambers and also livestreamed on YouTube, and it is after 7:00 PM. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, December 2nd, 2024. Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on those here in attendance this evening?
Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Mr. Jose.
Here.
Ms. Knappick. Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
Yeah, Ms. Knappick had told me she wasn't going to be here. Unfortunately, she's a little under the weather, and we thought it would be best for her to keep it at home than to bring it here. So, we will proceed without her. We do have a quorum, and the agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I ask you to stand and join the members of council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, from council, can I have a motion to accept the minutes from our November 4th meeting? Motion. Motion by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Gaffey. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Mayor, how are you this evening?
Very good, thank you, Mr. President.
Well, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. Just a few updates to start with. At the last council's meeting, we had some concerns expressed from resident or a few residents about the fiber optic installation going on around town, and Joel sent out a report to council with some information on that. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that at all, or if council's got questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them, but I guess what we discovered after the fact was that the pedestals that were being complained about were much more common than any of us knew or realized, and apparently one of the differences that in newer neighborhoods where they were being installed originally, and the houses being bought with them in place, it was not as noteworthy as when they were going back into neighborhoods where streets were already constructed and installing. And I mean, those neighbors or those property owners were much more indignant about that happening, and understandably so, because again, when it's there, when you buy the property, you kind of accept it as is, but when it comes in after the fact, not so much. The steps that we've been taking were explained in that memo, and again, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to respond to those. We did wrap up the Citizens Government Leadership Academy this past week with a graduation. We had a pretty good representation throughout the community here. I know that Joel wants to talk about that in a second. He kept a list for me. Go ahead.
Yeah, we had the county auditor, or the state rep Meredith was there. We'd invited both at the time, both candidates, and just Meredith attended those. Somebody high up in Artiflex, Wayne County Library, Scheffler, Critsfield, Main Street, Worcester brush, WDC, and then a few citizens also. So it was a pretty good swath of our community.
So, and again, I know for some of the council members, you've been through that. The final session was more of a recap and review and a reflection and evaluation. The week before that, which I did have, I was at both of those, and the week before was a lot more fun. It was about parks and recreation. Joe Villa and Ashley led those. We started off with the lunch at Freelander Chalet, then hopped on a school bus and did a tour of a number of the city parks. I had no part of planning the itinerary, but as fate would have it, our first stop was Oak Hill Park. So yes, I did ride a school bus around a roundabout right off the bat, and we had, no injuries were reported, but in fairness, I did tell everybody to hang on as we entered it, but it went without incident. But Ashley, in all seriousness, Ashley and Joe did a great job. Took, again, maybe as council people, you know all the parks and where they're located and the histories, but most people in the community don't. They'll know maybe a park or two parks that they're close to them, but a lot of the ones are tucked away, and so I think it was kind of an eye-opener for them. Speaking of roundabouts, the Oak Hill and Milltown improvements and the roundabout are now officially open. I think probably most of the community were on them at some point before they were officially open, but now you can go on there with no threat of repercussions. I've got nothing but positive comments from people who've been using it, including some of the property owners that were really inconvenienced during construction, and I hope your feedback's been the same. But I think they look great once the grass comes in or that have been seeded. I don't know if that's going to happen yet this year, but it should look even better. Just some last minute, my notes, got news of a grant today that we received, and I'll let Joel talk a little bit about that.
Oh, so when Sandra Hall retired from Main Street, some community members created a fund for her at the Wayne County Community Foundation, and it's been generating on average about $2,000 a year since then. And so what happens is every year, she gets together with Kurt Denning and I, and we look through, you know, things for the downtown that we might be able to do. So most of the Christmas ornaments that you see, the big things, the nutcrackers and those kind of things, were purchased, at least in part, with some of those funds, and that continued again. We just got our check again this year for $2,000. We're going to purchase some downtown furniture for that, maybe a couple tables, the big ones that have the built-in like checker and chessboards in them that can sit in a public area. So just, I don't know if anybody knew that, but that's been every year since that's been established.
Just some activities since we last met. As I think I told you last time, we did follow up and meet with Luke Martin and talk about the potential use of podcasts by the city to better communicate maybe some more complex topics to the community, things that you don't want to hear me drone on about before a council meeting, but that, I think, we've got some ideas. They've got some agenda for what they're trying to do with their program, and we thought we had some programs that might fit within that agenda of topics, so we'll see where that goes. We'll keep you posted. At this point, it's because it's their program, so the good news is no cost to the city. Bad news is that we don't have complete control over what topics they want to choose, and it's not our program, it's theirs. That same day, we went to the rivering cutting event at the Wayne County Public Library for the Joyful Cafe. I think a lot of you were present there. I saw a lot of faces there. I know from the administration, we had plenty of people on hand for that. It was a nice turnout for a nice event. November 12th, had a breakfast meeting with Gabe Tudor, got an update on their Worcester Schools facilities plan that will be rolled out to the community at tomorrow night's Board of Education meeting, and we'll be talking more about that tonight. November 14th, Joel and I had the honor of being invited to lunch with Andy Michael, who's the Associate Dean and Director of Worcester's CFAS Campus, and the reason for that was that he had in town his boss, Dr. Kathan Kress, who's Dean of OSU's CFAS program statewide, and nice luncheon, or luncheon, we ate at Basil, so not that fancy. But we've talked about this before, there's no breaking news there, but I think there's genuine reason to be enthused about the projects they've got going on there and what's to come. And we've talked, again, nothing we hadn't heard about before, but we were kind of excited about it, and it was good hearing from Dr. Kress, and she's excited about it as well. I think there's really a possibility that we're going to have some big things come out of that over the next decade or so. And then finally, last Friday morning, we had the Worcester Community Hospital Board Strategic Retreat, talk about planning for the coming year, doing much of the same things that we're in the process of doing, budgeting, and Andre's going to talk to you at some point about how their budget's part of our budget, and you'll see more about that. Looking ahead, tomorrow, NAMI's putting on an art exhibit at the Arts Center from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, so I'd encourage you everybody to drop in if they get a chance. Of course, Friday night is the big one, Winter Wonderland. I have no idea what the forecast is. I hope for good weather. Andre's going to come through here for a second, and then we're off. Believe it or not, Thanksgiving is almost upon us, so that'll happen. So safe travels for everybody.
Thirty-two is the low, forty-two is the high, and it looks like a little wind.
Okay.
So it's going to be wintery.
Couldn't ask for anything more. Looking to the agenda tonight, we've got two items on third reading involving updates to our zoning ordinances. The first one has been amended pursuant to the comments that were made at the last council meeting. We have two items on second reading, they're going to need to remain on second reading. They're interrelated, and one of them can't be enacted until our next meeting because of some statutory notice requirements that hasn't run out yet. Then finally, we have six items on first reading. Want to point out that 2024-90 and 2024-91, which are items three and four in your agenda, they are budgeted and don't require three readings, and those are two that we would request approval tonight so that Mike Fritz can move forward with those projects. And I'll point out with regards to one of them, 2024-91, the only reason it's on the agenda for you tonight is because the $14,000 requested puts us past that $50,000 threshold that we have now for bringing matters to council. So I would just point that out because we've talked about this before, and from the administration's standpoint, if council is so inclined, we'd be more than happy to bring to you a piece of legislation moving that $50,000 threshold to $75,000, which would bring it in line with the bidding threshold we changed earlier in the year. If you think, if you recall back, we had both those pieces under discussion, and we went ahead and moved the bidding threshold up, but left the threshold to come to council at 50, which again, administration is fine, but also we, if council would like to see that moved up, we would be happy to bring you back legislation at one of our future meetings to do that. Finally, as I mentioned, we will have a very short executive session afterwards to talk about, and we'll do that after miscellaneous, after everybody's had a chance to speak, not to tie them up, but just to update council on a couple of things going on that involve the city. I'll close with two pieces of good news, and the first one, you bear with me a little bit because it may not sound like that, but probably are not aware or, but Saturday morning, we had an incident downtown involving a male threatening suicide with a knife on one of our main streets. And he, you know, was not at that point threatening anybody else, but he did have a knife with him, and Worcester PD was called. And, you know, at this point in the story, I think you probably, you know, obviously you haven't heard anything, but certainly a good reason for us to take a breath because from national stories, you know that these can go very badly very quickly. But the responding officers spent about 15 minutes of trying to de-escalate the situation, and the long and short of it was that he put down the knife and was pink slipped and shipped off to someplace where he could get the help he needed, and nothing came of it. So it's almost a non-story to some extent, but because it's a non-story, I wanted to bring it to council's attention that Worcester PD did exactly what you'd hoped they would and would expect of them frankly, and because of that, there is no story. We aren't in the news. There's an individual that's safe and getting, at least safer than when he came into our attention, so he's getting that, and I want to give Chief Fisher and his crew a shout out for that. It's just one of those things that could have gone very badly, and thanks to the professionalism of our officers and maybe a little bit of luck, it didn't. So want to give those guys a shout out for that. And the last thing I will say is that if you want to see a picture of a newborn, and you haven't seen any lately, you can ask Joel, because he became a grandfather again over the weekend, and he has the obligatory photos with him, so he'd be happy to share. So with that, I've got nothing further. Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no petitions this evening. Communications from the public will be, everyone signed up for the miscellaneous section. Moving on, committee reports, we have none. We had no public hearings. So at this point, we will move back into, we will move into unfinished business. First item, third reading, it's amended ordinance. I'm assuming, Ms. Warden, you're going to take that for us this evening? Before that, Ms. Hamilton, would you read it for us?
Amended Ordinance Number 2024-28, an ordinance to approve and adopt the recommendations of the Planning Commission and amend the codified ordinances in accordance with those recommendations.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is an amendment that is, affects the proposed changes to the city's planning and zoning code, and it specifically addresses a section about spacing for tobacco and e-cigarette stores. In the original legislation, there was mention of medical marijuana and marijuana retail stores. That was included in the new spacing requirements, and these businesses fall under a separate category. So this amendment will strike any mention of them from the commercial adult uses category of the use-specific standards portion of our planning and zoning code. And we have talked about this at the previous two meetings, so I'm going to move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Okay, motion is adopt, adopted. Thank you. Next item is also a third reading ordinance that will be done by Ms. Warden, but we'll have Ms. Hamilton read it for us first.
Ordinance Number 2024-29, an ordinance to approve and adopt the recommendations of the Planning Commission and amend the codified ordinances in accordance with those recommendations.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So we've had ample time here on council to review the amendments that were unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission to our planning and zoning code here in the city. This particular ordinance addresses conflicts in the current code that relate to recreational facilities, correcting it to conditionally permitted use. It also creates additional restrictions for tobacco and e-cigarette stores or vape shops by limiting new shops to the C3 zoning district and requiring that they be located at least one mile from any other existing ones. It discusses in the previous legislation that it will be applied to this section of the code. In addition, there are clarifications and updates to the code regarding fencing materials, alternative energy, wetland regulations, vehicle waiting spaces, and signage, but because we've gone over this at length in previous meetings, we're not going to do that. I will say Mr. Marion would probably be happy to answer any questions we have before we vote on this, but I'm going to make a motion to adopt.
All right, motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Is there any questions that we have for Mr. Marion? All right, well, with that, Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the vote.
Ms. Warden, yes. Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
No.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes. Okay, motion is approved. Move on to our next item, Ordinance 2024-30, it is a second reading, and Ms. Hamilton, would please read it for us?
Ordinance Number 2024-30, creating the Silver Road Tax Increment Financing Incentive District, declaring improvements to the parcels within the incentive district to be of public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, oh, Mr. President, I must recuse myself from-
Yes, very good. Thank you, Mr. Jose. Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Okay, so this is for the Silver Road TIF, and this is the financing arm of it, and this is going to the developmental piece of the roads and the infrastructure out there. Talked about this at the last meeting, and because Ms. Knappick is not here, and we do have a recusal, we cannot move to do anything this evening, so if there's any questions, we can take that. If not, we need to go ahead and move this to a third and final reading.
All right.
Mr. Myers?
I have a question for the, I think, just to clarify, I think you addressed this last meeting. If we were at some point in the future, in like five years or 10 years, there's additional adjacent properties to the current TIF boundaries. Those could be added, or this could be amended in a way to address adding different properties for development as well?
This could support adjacent infrastructure for that.
Correct. Just that.
So we wouldn't necessarily be able to change the boundaries. However, if there is additional development nearby, that in itself can become its own tip.
Okay.
And you can direct funding from there to support a mutually beneficial project, as long as that public infrastructure is benefiting that development that has that tip in place, you can utilize that.
Okay, I knew there was a mechanism. You sort of explained, I think, last time how it worked. I just wanted to clarify, because there are some properties that are pretty close and adjacent that might have a good future development use that we would want to consider in the future, so I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. This ordinance has had its second reading, and we'll move on to the next one. You're going to stay recused there, Mr. Jose? Okay, not a problem. Next ordinance, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance Number 2024-31, approving the execution and delivery of a development agreement with the Worcester Development Company to LTD.
All right, Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Okay, this is connected to the TIF we just talked about. This is the execution of said infrastructure development, giving the mayor the authorization to go out and make it happen. So again, this is a second reading, so we did have discussion about it the last meeting. So if there's any questions, we can go ahead and ask them now. If not, we need to go ahead and move this to a third and final reading.
Any questions? All right. Very good, we'll move on then. This one's had its second reading, it'll have a third. We're good with that. Mr. Jose, if you want to join us. We move on to our new business items. First one will also be introduced again by Mr. Abernathy. This is a three reading piece. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution Number 2024-89, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into an agreement with the Wayne County Commissioners for the prosecution of municipal ordinances by the Wayne County Prosecutor and for payment for such services and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Well, this one I think is pretty easy. This is the agreement between the city and the county to essentially provide for services for the county prosecutor, and this is for a one-year agreement with a 2.5% increase to keep in line with labor cost increases. Pretty clear-cut and simple. Anything you guys want to add to that?
Regardless, we do have County Prosecutor Wypassik here with us tonight. If you have any questions for her, for the Law Department, I would just say that for municipal misdemeanor prosecutions, it would be difficult for us to match the value that we get from this contract in-house, and so I would be recommending Passage at this point. And if you have any further questions, I know Prosecutor Wypassik would be happy to answer them.
Do you have anything you wish to add to it there?
Nothing else related to the increase, but I would be happy to provide just some information about developments in our office in the last year since I came and spoke with you last time, if you're interested.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you again for inviting me here and for your attention to our contract and consideration of it. So the developments I wanted to tell you about largely concern staffing, if you recall last year when I came, and this has been a few years now. It's been particularly difficult to find and hire and retain qualified assistant prosecutors, particularly in the criminal division. And so we have, since I was last here, had turnover in particularly our municipal division, but we also did some rearranging of assistant prosecutors in different positions so that they can now play more to their strengths. And it benefited not only the assistant prosecutors in those particular positions, but our office and our divisions overall by making that change. I would tell you that just in the last few months, we have added two new municipal prosecutors, and although they don't particularly have a lot of experience in the prosecution side of criminal law, they do have quite a bit of experience as attorneys, and so they also have that practical experience just in practicing, and one actually teaches. We have just in the last few months added Brian Carbina. He is actually a certified law enforcement officer, so he has a great deal of experience in criminal law as a police officer. He also was an adjunct professor and taught the police academy, which he still does as he can on an ongoing basis in addition to keeping his police commission. He has total, when you consider his teaching experience in teaching law to the police as well as other things, he has about 12 years' experience as a lawyer. He was also in civil practice for a time. We have also added David Smith just a few months before Brian Carbina. He has 26 years' experience as a lawyer. He was actually an assistant public defender in the early 2000s in Wayne County. He has also been in private practice doing civil criminal work and was a part-time assistant law director doing civil work in Stark County. So I believe with the addition of David Smith, Brian Carbina, we have experience there in our municipal court division now in the last few months, and also in this year, we, in changing around, people, like I said, putting assistant prosecutors in positions where they can play better to their strength, David Haverfield became our chief criminal assistant prosecuting attorney, and that change happened officially at the end of August. David Haverfield has 28 years' experience as a lawyer. He, many years ago, did some criminal defense. He, most recently, for many, many years, was the Director of Job and Family Services as well as CSP. It was a dual-director position for many, many years. Prior to that, he was their staff attorney. So he too has many years of practicing as an attorney, and so I think with the three of those attorneys in those positions, we, you know, stand to gain a lot of ground and do a good job on the municipal cases for the city of Worcester and all the other jurisdictions for which we handle those cases. So I do appreciate your consideration. The 2.5% request in the increase is due to the Commissioners approving a 2.5% increase in funding for all of our staff support positions as well as the assistant prosecutors. One and a half of that is a range movement increase, and 1.5% of that, and then 1% of that is a merit increase for a total of 2.5%. And I did look at particularly, just to be up to speed on what our numbers look like this year for a number of cases, and we are pretty similar to around this time last year. A little bit lower on the misdemeanor criminal cases, but I think the number from last year when I was here was more from late November. This one was from November 12th. The difference is about 1,365 around this time last year. This year, it's about 1,289. And that's- And that's total cases, not just Worcester cases. Last year, we did end up total misdemeanor criminal cases at 1,545.
Wow.
And it usually stays around that area or in that ballpark.
Okay.
So thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for the update.
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Abernathy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Husey. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on suspension of the rules.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Husey. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on motion to adopt.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
All right. Motion has been adopted. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Next item is also a three-reading ordinance. Will also be by Mr. Abernathy, but Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-35, an ordinance appropriating from various funds to individual accounts for the current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Worcester for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
All right. Everybody in front of you, you got the purple binder that Mr. Dordia decided on that color this year. That is your 2025 appropriations budget. We are missing the hospital. They are going to be coming up with that here shortly. I will need to call a finance committee meeting for, prior to the December 2nd council meeting, to start at 6:00 PM, to go over this budget along with the hospitals. So I will give just a few moments here for Mr. Dordia, if he would like to just touch on a few items here, but obviously, we're going to need to go in-depth during finance committee meeting in December.
Sure. Thank you. Very good.
Been a huge Prince fan, that's why you see the purple. The budget in front of you has seven different sections in it. Briefly, the first section, you'll see our core values, goals, your social chart for the city, you'll see employee numbers historically and current. There's a definitions section, there's some department narratives in there, and then you're going to see some financial policies. You read a couple charter graphs that I do every year. The second section are our individual fund statements. In those individual fund statements, you'll see 21 through 23 actual numbers, there'll be 24 my forecast, and then what we budgeted, you compare the two, and then you'll see the 25 budget, and then what I'm forecasting, the 26, 2026, 2029. So it's for all those funds. And then Section 3 is our capital section and infrastructure. So you'll see what we're proposing to spend on capital and infrastructure for all the various departments and divisions. Section 4 is our future capital planning section. And then Section 5 is carp out for the hospital. And their budget meeting was on Friday, and their board asked me until Wednesday to ratify the budget, so I didn't want to be premature and throw that in there, so I'll wait until Wednesday, the 27th, when the board needs to ratify. And then I'll email that, PDF that to you, but I'll print out a hard copy and bring it to you Monday night, so you don't have to waste your, you don't have to use your printer paper. Okay? So that would be Section 5. Section 6 is our debt section, where I list all our debt and show what its principal outstanding is for a five-year period. And then, I think, Section 7 is a glossary, because there's all kinds of goofy, you know, government accounting words and definitions in there. So that's that nutshell, and then we'll explain more as the hospital will. But it's been, actually, the last two years, I have to say, have been boring, which is good, which I really like when we're going over them. So boring is a good word. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Dordia? Then we will move that on to a second reading.
All right. Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to our next item, Resolution 2024-90, which is a budgeted item, which will be introduced by Mr. Malta, but Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2024-90, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a contract to purchase a custom-built heat exchanger for the city's anaerobic digester system and biogas generator and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Mr. Fritz is here with us tonight for any in-depth detail, things that we might have, question-wise. We're going to replace the digester heat exchanger with the past six 10-year-old mark. Obviously, we all know we're doing a lot of work down at the treatment plant. We've got to come out on the budget. We need to get done. If we don't get this done, there are ramifications that are getting pretty expensive to bring in somebody to handle the sludge, and see here, it's about $1,500 a day.
Sorry, my mic's not on. Missed that. But if we go ahead and get this approved tonight, we can eliminate any delays and keep everything on schedule. Anybody has any questions? I'll direct you to Mike.
All right. Well, doesn't appear to be any questions, so at that point, I'm assuming you...
I would like to move to...
Motion to adopt? All right. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
All right. Our next item, Resolution 2024-91, also a budgeted item, and Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Resolution number 2024-91, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of additional funds for the design of heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment for the water treatment plant and the water resource recovery facility and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. So as Mayor spoke earlier, this is exceeding the $50,000 limit. I certainly don't want to make any calls on raising this to $75,000 without barb, but maybe in the near future, we will have this discussion, because we continue to hit this, and I think Joel told us more than a dozen times this year so far. And we're going to unfortunately keep seeing this happen to us a little while longer. Hopefully, things will start leveling out. However, yeah, I'm going to move to adopt this, just because...
Okay. Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Is there any discussion, questions? Mr. Fritz about this?
Thanks for coming anyway. Always ask.
Well, no questions. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the motion to adopt.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
All right. Well, you can keep moving along. All right. Our next item, Resolution 2024-92, it's three-reading, scheduled by Ms. Knappick, but Ms. Warden will do the honors on that, but before then, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2024-92, a resolution extending a moratorium on the granting or processing of permits for any building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable cultivation, processing, or retail sale of marijuana within the City of Worcester and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. In light of Ms. Knappick's absence this evening, I'm going to leave this on first reading, but I'd like to take the opportunity briefly to mention just sort of my comments for counsel's thoughts over the coming weeks until the next meeting. I think that, or I've heard that recreational dispensaries are planned in a number of the surrounding communities. One has, I think, been approved by the Village of Loudenville, for example. So it's not out of the realm of possibilities that one could open here in Wayne County, just outside of the city's limits. I already know people who traveled to nearby communities, such as Akron or Canton, to buy their products, but they bring them back home to use them in Worcester, where they live. I've heard arguments from dispensary naysayers who believe that a dispensary in Worcester would drastically increase crime and our health care needs in the community. But I think it also needs to be said that if those things are true, and these products are going to be used here anyway, it would be imprudent of us to turn away any of the financial benefit that these businesses might bring to our community, dollars that would be directed, or could be directed, to increasing health care services and law enforcement efforts if necessary. And I understand that the topic is very complex, and it evokes a lot of concerns and emotion from people, but I would just encourage you guys to all look at it from this angle. I know there's also a lot of moving pieces at the federal level. Mr. Abernathy's brought up good points with regard to banking, and I know that that's something that there's, I think it's still pretty murky, what's been going on. I think there's a light at the end of the tunnel, but who knows if that light is going to shine this year, or, you know, in the next 10 years? We don't know. But I would just like to encourage everybody to look at it maybe from that perspective. And I'm going to leave this here on this reading and allow Ms... I would like to also say, I know I told Mr. Sanders, but I will not be at the next meeting, so I believe Ms. Knappick is planning to leave this until the third and final reading. So for community members at home, and for all the council, you have probably another few weeks that you can gather information from your constituents and, you know, do any more research that you want to do before we take a vote on it.
Okay. Thank you. I know one of the people who signed up for miscellaneous is Ms. Oles, who specifically signed up related to this. Did you want to speak now, since this is, since it's going to be about this topic anyways?
How did you know? My name is Kate Oles. I live at 10225 Ranchester Road in Burbank, Ohio. I know it's been a few months since I've been in front of this council, but we do have the benefit now that Ohio has begun its dual-use sales, and we've been able to get kind of a feel of how these stores operate. Thus far, it's been without incident. There has not been a security incident or anything that has not only been submitted to the state or impacted the media that would indicate that there is any type of heightened security concern with allowing dual-use sales. Really, it gives people access to a product that is legal in the state and a place that, again, is safe and tested and regulated, especially as it relates to things like packaging. Simultaneously, across the state, we have vape shops, which I understand the City of Worcester is looking to limit or have a moratorium on, but these vape shops are selling intoxicating hemp products, which have large amounts of psychoactive compounds that are not tested by any state requirements. They're not in child-resistant packaging, and they're available in this community right now. There's still discussion at the state level about prohibiting intoxicating hemp products from being sold. There was recent legislation that was submitted, I want to say, a few weeks ago. But until that happens, this is the only outlet people in this community have to be able to purchase these products, and they continue to do so. If there's not a place where they can shop, they will either drive 35 minutes or 40 minutes to Akron, or they will go to an illicit source, where who knows what they end up with, or they'll go to these vape shops, where there's products that have cookies on them and animals, and I saw like a 500-milligram Nerds rope, none of which are compliant in licensed dispensaries. I'd be happy to address any questions specifically as it relates to banking or the way these dispensaries operate, but I just encourage you guys to really take a look and see, is this something that would operate so much so in a way that would be a negative for the community, or instead give a regulated option to something that is already happening here that, right now, there's unfortunately no control over?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, Resolution 2024-92 has had its first reading. We'll move on to ordinance 2024-36, which will also be by Ms. Warden. And Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2024-36, an ordinance amending Chapter 162, Management Benefits and Allowing for Immediate Enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is a change that was accidentally left out of the changes that were made in the previous res, or in a previous resolution. If it's approved, it will bring the management benefits in line with all other city employees based on their respective collecting, collective bargaining agreements. There's no cost difference to taxpayers, and it will improve the city's retention and recruiting efforts overall. The specific language to be added falls under Chapter 162, Management Benefits, and it reads, "Exception: Employees retiring from city service shall be eligible for the retention payment upon retirement from the city and shall be paid in their final paycheck." And it appears under Sections 03, which is leaves, and 07, retention benefits. Since it's non-controversial, and I did speak with Ms. Knappick this evening, and she says she has no problem with this, I'm going to move that it be placed on third and final reading this evening.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules, the council? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
No.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
All right. Well, this will stay on first reading then. All right. Well, that's the end of new business. We'll move on to miscellaneous. We'll start off with public comment, which at this point, now with having Ms. Oles do hers, Mr. Barnett, you're up next.
Excuse me. I fell off the ladder. I'm a little slow. Anyhow, we, you know, Bob read a letter last week and had different topics on it, and one was property value. And I told him to destroy the property value. They disagreed with me. Over in Green, my sister lives over in Green, they put a roundabout at a T, just like Milltown and Oakville. The driveway to this property was right there at the entrance, as mine will be. I don't know if this couple sued the city, or if they come into agreements. They vacated the house. The house is gone. And you know what they're doing with the land now? It's commercial. It isn't residential. Because nobody would want a driveway right at the beginning. The city over there has enough common sense to realize that, and that's why they changed it to commercial. You know, I went golfing a couple weeks ago. Five gentlemen from Worcester. We took separate cars. We got over there, I was on the practice, and this is the last thing I want to think about, is this roundabout. This is why I go fishing, and this is why I go golfing. But they said, Dave, what's the story on that? And I told, they want to put a roundabout. And they're looking at us and just shaking their head, except one gentleman, he said, Dean, he said, Dave, what's the big deal with you? I said, the first thing, the big deal to me was the safety of our students. Crossing at them crosswalks at that chaos time is just asking for somebody to get hurt or worse. And if you want that on your conscience, put it on your conscience. I don't want it on mine. I'm proud to say I stood up for these people for their safety. Thank you. Oh, everybody have a nice Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next part of miscellaneous will be, if someone on council will give me a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
It's moved by Ms. Warden, seconded by Mr. Husey. Ms. Hamilton, you please call the, please call the vote?
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
All right. We are in executive session. All right. A motion. Motion by Mr. Abernathy, seconded by Mr. Gaffey. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll to come out of executive session.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
All right. Last part, city council members' comments. We'll start with you, Mr. Huse.
Just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving because we'll miss you before the next meeting. And looking forward to the budget process, Mr. Abernathy.
Oh, thanks.
Mr. Abernathy?
Nothing to add this evening. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Myers?
I just wanted to commend the Worcester City Police Officers for handling an incident that happened and occurred very professionally. I appreciate the fact that we have such good folks here in our city and working for Chief Fisher. Assistant Chief Rattol. I appreciate all the work they do and the fact that they do it well. Like the mayor said earlier, it wasn't an incident because it was handled professionally and properly. So that's all I, oh, and I wanted to say I did tour the fire station next door, outstanding building, and hats off to everybody involved in putting that together. Well done. I think it'll serve our first responders well for many years to come, so.
Ms. Malta?
Thank you, sir. I would like to thank everybody that did join us this evening. We're empty now. That's okay. Would like to compliment the water and wastewater departments as I did take a tour and got a lot going on down at the wastewater plant, but definitely very well-needed additions so that we can have clean water going to our creek.